I'm confused. What are you?
Okay.
Talking about the minutes from September 11th right now, right?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. I thought that we were on the agenda.
On the agenda. You have a concern with the agenda?
Yeah. I just wondered if they're doing something new. They did this about three years ago and I couldn't sleep all night long. The numbers of the reports.
Are you speaking of the page numbers?
Yes.
Okay, so there was a memo that went out that explained we were going to do the page numbers a little differently. So on the bottom of the pages, it actually has the item number followed by the page number of the report.
Did you send it in this?
It went out with the distribution list, so it would have been there.
Oh, okay, so, okay, well, sorry. Let's go to, well, let's go to G1. So, there's no page, so I have to...
If you look at the bottom of the page where the page number has traditionally been, you'll notice that they actually have the number of the item on that.
Right, so the agenda of G1 says Homeless Action Week and has a file number.
Okay, so that's how, so...
Well, policy numbers. So, Ms. Bauer, how would we find the page number for that report?
What I've done is I've combined the item number to the page number. So it becomes unnecessary to put the page number in the agenda. You just look down at the bottom where the page number is and go along till you get to G1. It's still, otherwise we just put G1, page 1 to G1P, page 10 or whichever number.
Okay, so now I'm in the evening.
But this is only to the printed agenda. This is not the...
Yeah, this is strictly the printed. It was done to try and make it easier in council when some people are looking at Granicus and some people are looking at the report. And that's been a problem in the past. So I thought I'd try something where we have the report numbers combined with the agenda number so that everybody's talking about the same page of the report.
Okay.
Ah, okay, so...
Well, that helps out. But then I have to, I guess, I guess if you're on F1, you just have to go to find out, to read...
Right. Well, let's talk about G1 because that's what we were talking about, so...
Perhaps to, this might help.
A, B, C, G, okay.
The lettering goes, perhaps to clarify, Your Worship.
Acting Chair.
Now I have to learn the alphabet. I couldn't least count a little bit.
So in theory, the way to look at it, rather than going page 1 to 1,000, it would go by topic, G1, so A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And then G1 may be 100 pages long or 1,000 pages long or one page long. So you'd actually see G1, page 1 to whatever. The outline, the agenda just references G1 because basically you've got as many pages as you would have topics and then you'd have sub the number of pages per report. I believe in that way it's closer to what's appearing on the electronic versions.
Okay, so Counselor Long will never get screwed up like I do.
Well, there's no guarantee of that. That's for sure.
No, I guess not.
But I haven't seen a printed one for many years, so...
Well, actually, that seems simple now. So when I read my report, or when I read that, B or C or whatever, then I just...
Go to G1.
As soon as it, as soon as B stops and B, A, B, C, as soon as C starts, then I know I'm on a new one.
Right. Okay, so, you're right, now Counselor Richter, this is about the agenda then, so we're going back, back here, yep.
Yeah, it's about the agenda. I don't like this system. I'm sorry. It's not easy to reference if you're dealing with hard copy. So if that's the case, then we're going to have these pages numbered, G2, page 1, G2, page 3. Can I get dividers for each of these things in my booklet so I can flip quickly?
Oh, so you could have alphabetical dividers in the hard copy, is that what you're saying?
But that just creates more cost. Why wouldn't you just put the page number on the agenda?
The only reason for the page number on the agenda, to that question, is because then we have multiple page numbers from the electronic versions to the printed copies. So if there's one individual or more that want to have the A letters representing the dividers, that's something we could look into because if it's only one copy, that may not be that difficult.
And that wouldn't be a huge expense to have alphabetical dividers if that's what you want, Counselor Richter. And I guess we could, you know, if you wanted to, Counselor Davis, you could ask for it. You don't have to have it. Can you not find the, can you find the alphabet?
Well, actually, Counsel Arneson just puts a little thing in there, and I used to do that too, but I, it's okay. We don't want to get Counsel Farrell all in an uproar here.
No, nobody's in an uproar here. It's all good.
And I'm a creature of habit and I don't like change. And I'm, so, when it changed, I just wondered if that was a mistake or if it's something else. So I, okay, I've just, I said my piece, but that's fine. It's okay.
No, but shouldn't we have been consulted before this change was done? I mean, we're the ones that have to read it.
Well, we certainly want to, again, this is page numbering, so we're trying to find out what is consistent because the request we were hearing was to be consistent across the board. I think we can be consistent with, for those that do use a paper copy, which there's very few of us, myself included, and having a tab put in there for the numbers, I think that might actually break it up and make it easier to achieve. That would still make it consistent then with the electronic copies in terms of the page numbering.
Tab for the letters, not the numbers?
Letters, sorry, for the letters, yeah.
Okay, all right. Counselor Richter, all right? Counselor Qualley, you're going to talk about this.
I don't want to, I want to talk about this topic, but not this exact subject. But in the agenda for today, under item I1, there's a motion in other business from Counselor Fox. The same thing happened to me last week in the motion that Counselor Davis presented in Granicus. I have a topic here, but there's no motion. It showed up once and then it never came back again. This motion never showed up at all on Granicus, so I'm not sure if there's actually a motion there or if it's just a warning that there's a motion coming.
Now, I have it under legislation text.
If you click on the legislative text, it does open up. Unfortunately, there's two things going on. First of all, Granicus has done some updating recently, so I'm not too sure if that's the problem. And I'll be honest, Suzanne, the agenda person is currently off ill and I'm doing my best to kind of fix it. I may have placed it in a different line than is normally traditionally been placed in, but it is there. You just click on a legislative text.
I see it now, thank you. And I don't normally click on legislative texts because there's not usually anything there. But that's probably why it showed up and then disappeared. And then I just didn't bother looking for it there. So, okay, thank you. I'll keep looking there before I...
Okay, so we're okay with legislative text? Because I always open that one myself. Counselor Sparrow, what do you have to say about this?
Well, I guess I'm just wondering where we're at here because we're, I feel like we're now creating a lot more work for staff. So if members of council would like to add sticky notes or little things to alphabetize, I think there's, Staples has them. You can stick them on and write on them and tab it up. So I think each member of council is welcome to do that or they're welcome to go to the 21st century electronic version, I think is also an option. But I'm a little cautious that we're now adding this to staff, to now have each member of council have their agenda written in one way versus another. I think we should keep it easy. And if members of council would like to put dividers or tabs, I think they're welcome to do that on their own, but I would be cautious of adding staff to now have to remember which way each member of council would like their agenda written.
At this point, it's just a discussion point, and I guess each council will work it out with staff, right? But there isn't any motion to change anything. Counselor Richter, again.
Yeah, no, I think that the system that was in place was working just fine. I don't necessarily believe that all changes are for the better. And I, for one, would like to be able to easily reference through my hard copy, and I can't now because there's no page numbers. So I don't think this is a good change.
No, there's no vote required. It's just a discussion. I think I better move on. So that was an extended discussion on the agenda, and now we were on minutes. So Counselor Davis, you had moved the acceptance of the September 11th minutes. Are you still okay with that? Is that where we're at, Kim? Yeah. So it was moved and seconded, and any discussion now on the September 11th minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And a motion to move into special resolved, and the items are there, A, E, E.
Moved.
Moved by Counsel Fox, seconded by Counsel Davis. Any additions? No. All in favor? Opposed, we're going closed. Thank you very much. We'll call the regular afternoon meeting of council for September the 18th back to order, reconvene. And we were at item D, and there were no presentations. Item E, there were no delegations. And F1 is a financial report update. Mr. Becken.
Thank you, Your Worship. As we traditionally do each, I was going to say quarter, but it may be every third of the year, we provide you with financial report updates. As is typical in this case, we're seeing that in most cases we're underspent, which is usual because of the fact we have a number of capital projects that just originate probably about midway through the year. So now we're in the catch-up program. Most operational expenditures are within either projections or our past experience. I'll phrase it that way, within our past experience. And we're really here to answer any questions council may have.
Okay, we should probably have a motion then that council received the financial update report June 30th, 2017 for information. Counsel Arneson, seconded by Counsel Davis. Discussion. What? No discussion? Okay, then we'll call the question. Now, we hit, call the vote, and away we go. Okay, we'll vote then, all in favor and opposed. You have to push your buttons. So vote completed. I do that now? Do I? Label vote, help me out.
It's item F1.
Oh, so I have to put F1 in here? Oh, okay, there we go. And it passes with everybody in agreement. There you go. Thank you. All right, now we're moving to correspondence. There's two items. Can we have a mover to accept the two items, G1 and G2? Moved by Fox and Arneson, and the, all in favor? Do we have to push buttons for that? No. Yes? Okay, let's push buttons. Hang on a second, I got to push this call vote thing. This isn't going to work. And this is going to be...
G1.
Thank you. G1, okay, call the vote, vote completed. Fox, you have to vote. There you go. Thank you. That passes. And anybody want to discuss any of them? Okay, Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Further to G2, I just wanted to say that there is considerable interest in the flag-raising ceremony, I believe, as was held last year. And so specifically, LSCAT has said that they would be interested in participating and are looking forward to that event.
Excellent. And staff will send out a notice as to when that is so we can all be there. All right, excellent. Any more discussion? No. And then, oh yeah, Counselor, did you push something? Okay. So we've already received G1 and G2. Now we're into H1, is that correct? Yeah. So we're going to have a motion to receive Council Priorities Committee meeting and the Heritage Advisory Committee meeting, one of the 24th of July, the other September 16th. Moved by Counsel Qualley, seconded by Counsel Fox. I guess we'll vote on that too. All right, and that's going to be H1. Just a moment, just a moment. H1, boy, a lot of work this is. Okay, that passes. Any discussion on those? There's no actions required from council on them, but anyone who want to discuss anything from either of those minutes? Hearing none. We'll move on then, thank you, to I1, which is a notice of motion from Counsel Fox. Take it away, Counsel Fox. Just a second, I'll turn you on there.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Long. So I do have a slight revision, so I'll read it. Be resolved that all valid, complete applications for development in the Brookswood Furniture Community Plan area submitted for, submitted prior to and in between May 16th and July 24th be processed by staff on a first-come, first-served basis, subject to compliance with both the 1987 plan, adopted Brookswood Furniture Community Plan, and the land use designations of the draft Brookswood, 2017 draft Brookswood Furniture Community Plan. I assume.
Okay, moved by Counsel Fox, seconded by Counsel Richter. So we will have a speaking queue. Counsel Fox, did you want to speak to it?
Yes, please.
Push the button, there you go.
So council made a motion, so this is a motion to revise a previous council motion. They made it on May the 8th, that the last day of submissions was for accepted land use plans for Brookswood, the undeveloped area, was going to be May the 16th, which left an eight-day window, which was a very small window. At the last meeting we were at, Counsel Richter raised the point about, well, what about between May 16th and July 24th? Because on July 24th, this council voted to not accept third reading and, in fact, go back to a public hearing, which takes us back one step and puts us into a situation, us, we, council, into a situation where we were on May the 8th. So why would we not accept in the intervening approximate nine weeks those applications which may have come in? Now, by way of motion, we asked for a list of those from Mr. Seffy. Mr. Seffy had a very limited time window for a couple of reasons, the time it would take, but he assumed there was about six applications. Many of those may be complete, or sorry, some of those may be complete, some of them may be incomplete. But like the five that we've dealt with, if they comply with the 1987 Brookswood Furniture Community Plan and they comply with the land use, land use element of the 2017 draft Brookswood Community Plan, in other words, they would be acceptable on your both, then why don't we just accept them like we've done to date and extend the date from May 16th to July 24th? In my personal assumption, this would probably relate to one, maybe two additional, additional projects, proposals being accepted. So I don't think this is a great owner's element on staff. It doesn't give a timeframe, so it doesn't say they have to be reviewed today, but they will be reviewing. And what it says to, what it does to staff, it says, okay, process these. Ones that don't comply, put them to the side. Ones that do comply, put them into the work order like you would any other plan, proposed plan. So I think we've seen through the work that staff has done with the proposals that have come forward where staff has anywhere from 11 to 13 conditions. So I think they've got that covered very well, and I think that this just allows a little bit of liberty that we, because of the decision we made, to go back one step, so.
Okay, Mr. Becken, when we had some discussion at the last meeting, there was a question asked, how many applications were in stream and different numbers were given. Counsel Fox has now said there may only be one or two. I'm not sure if staff can clarify how many applications this would affect.
Through to, Your Worship, one application. One application's been received, and it's from the Platinum Group, and it complies with both the 87 plan and the proposed 2017 plan.
So there's only one application?
So just to clarify, I believe that's one completed application. I believe there's other applications, but they're not completed or not comply with the, with both elements. Is that correct?
From reviewing, from reviewing the information as recently as this morning, we had a flurry of applications prior to council's resolution on the 16th. The resolution said items that were meant to be considered up until the 16th could be considered at that date, so that would be the 17th plus. To date, we've only had one in that period, once again, from the Platinum Group, for single-family residential lots at a minimum lot size of 650 square meters, which complies with both the existing 87 plan, which is designated as single-family residential, and single-family residential 3 and the proposed 2017 plan, which also proposes 650 square meter minimum size lots.
Okay, and the speaker's list is Counsel Arneson next on the motion.
Thank you, Your Worship. I read the original and now I know it's slightly amended. I guess with all due respect, I really can't support this. As council may be aware, there was, as we know, a discussion at the last council meeting with respect to whether or not, out of, you know, a sense of, I'm not sure, obligation or fairness to look at the timeframe that we had created and perhaps consider opportunities to allow some other applications to come forward through the process. But also, I recollect quite clearly that I was not in favor of that in the first place and actually stated at one time, although it wasn't supported by council, that I wouldn't like any other applications in the interim until such time as we had gone forward with either one plan or the other. So I have a couple of reasons why I am not supporting this. The first one is that at a particular point in time, staff, through their own due diligence and based on the information that they had, put a particular timeframe in place. Council agreed to that and we took applications based on that, and we've already acted upon those. So, you know, from my perspective, I think that unfortunately, any new changes, changing the goalpost, is going to actually, I guess, disadvantage those who are waiting in the process based on the initial information that we gave them. And so to me, that wouldn't actually be fair and equitable to do that to those who had decided, well, if this is the actual timeframe, then I'm not going to put my application forward. Also because I feel that we recently had a public hearing, and there was no conversation at the public hearing having to do with this addition to the process. And so I also feel that this is just almost an amendment that we're making after the fact. And just finally, I think that the optics of this would not be very good. We already made a decision, and I don't think that we should be going backwards and, you know, trying to put something into play, as I say, to me would be changing the goalpost. And I just don't believe that that's an appropriate or principled thing to do at this point.
Thank you, Counsel Richter.
So there's only been one completed application come through. Can people start applications without having them complete? Like, were there any that came in that, before May 16th that weren't complete and so are in limbo right now?
Mr. Becken, or Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Your Worship, to Counsel Richter. The ones that were received up to and including May 16th had all the required information to be considered a complete application from the town's point of view in terms of fees being paid, integrated site design concept works being submitted. So those ones were all completed applications up to and including the 16th. We've received one subsequent to that date, which is complete and is in that period that council's discussing at the moment.
Okay. And so last week we had discussed about the inequity because our public hearing process has dragged out as long as it has, that those people with completed applications are potentially losing revenue now because they can't proceed with their applications. That, so that's, there is, and there's only one that's affected. Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else like to speak? Counsel Fox, I guess you're up again.
Yeah, well, Counsel Richter, or sorry, Counsel Arneson mentioned, this council made a decision on May the 18th. And if we want to talk about fairness, the council made a decision and gave anybody that was out there that had potentially a semi-complete or almost a completer, close to complete, application eight days. Just, we gave them eight days. So, you know, this was, May 16th was never published a long, long time before. It was never, it was an arbitrary decision made on May the 8th at the May 8th council meeting. So, you know, we've been, we talked about fairness. I mean, if this was a six-month or 10-month process, I can understand that, you know, if you don't get it in, you know, it's like a paper in school, okay? Give you three, four, five weeks. Then if you don't hand it in, guess what? You don't get it in on time and you get assessed accordingly. We, we, the nine of us at this table made the short deadline, not anybody else, this wasn't staff. And so I don't know if Mr. Richardson's at liberty to know what day did it come in? Was it May the 20th or was it July the 20th or where in between? Through you.
Mr. Becken, I'll leave that to you to decide whether staff is going to answer.
Through, Your Worship, to Counsel Fox, July the 10th.
So it came in July the 10th. So, you know, yes, it missed that May the 16th, but it was before the July 24th. Sometimes when we make decisions at the table, there's consequences, unintended consequences. And I think that we have to look at this and say, okay, we took a step back, that was a decision made here, to go back to public hearing. So, you know, sometimes we live with that, the unintended consequences of those decisions, and this is the case in my opinion.
Thank you. Anybody else care to speak? No? Okay, then we'll call the vote. I guess if no one else is going to speak, I won't either. One, two, three, I see four Xs, so that means it fails. Correct? With Counsel Arneson, Davis, Sparrow, and Long opposed. All right, anything else? Let's see here. That brings us to the end of this very short meeting. We'll call for termination. Oh, that, no, 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 no. All right. It says termination on my paper here. Well, you didn't add any other business when we took the agenda, but if council wants to hear what...
It's open. You can add.
Well, it may be open on other people's meetings, but when we approve the agenda and there's nothing added, you know, but you go ahead, Counsel Fox. Go ahead. Yeah, you've got something to leave for us?
Okay, I wanted to talk about item 67 in our distribution from, 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 from September 14th, which is on page 142. And it deals with 2371772nd Avenue.
You're going to the items that's read it today?
No, September 14th.
Thank you, September 14th.
So we got a letter from Mr. Henry on September 6th. They received a letter from staff on August the 8th. It's included. They wrote back on September 6th, asked to be added to the September 11th. Ms. Bauer wrote back and said it's too late, the agenda's made up, and so on and so forth.
Excuse me, Counsel Fox, please tell us what item again you're on. Now we found the page.
Item 67, page 142, September 14th.
Item 67.
So...
Thank you.
So this particular situation was with respect to three unauthorized buildings on this particular property, 2371772nd Avenue. So they are dealing, in their, in their letter, we've been working with the bylaw officer, Navnit Shatra, and are working on removing some equipment from the property to bring it into compliance. So that's fine. They're working with bylaws. They're also planning to take the permit issue for two of the buildings to the Board of Variance and work through the Board of Variance to see if they can get compliance. Okay, fine. The letter that was received from Mr. Seth Saretti, who is, obviously, has, was sent to them, and that is the letter of August the 8th, says that prior to September 15th, please ensure the following buildings are removed. So number one, I'd like to get a status update on where we're at. Number two, I'd like to know when the next Board of Variance is and if this is on the agenda. And number three, I'd like to make a recommendation with respect to the answers to one and two. There you go.
Mr. Becken, do you have this information at your fingertips? So we're looking for, Counsel Fox is looking for an update on the letter that was written on August the 8th. Is that correct?
Well, I'm looking for an update on the September 15th deadline.
And, Mr. Chair, I will have to go and determine that. I haven't heard anything directly, but it's only the 18th, so we will explore that. And we can also, at that point, give you the next Board of Variance date, which we probably do know.
October 17th.
October 17th.
So it's October 17th? Well, what, what, okay, the number three then was, can we give Mr. Henry, because he's taking two of the buildings to the Board of Variance, can we give him some leeway so that he has the opportunity to go to the Board of Variance? Because that's his planned strategy. He's working with bylaws, fine. He has requested to go to the Board of Variance, which is... He has requested to go to the Board of Variance, which is an option, or any citizen has if they're in this situation. So would this be a possibility to give him some leeway rather than having to, to destructure these buildings by September 15th?
Mr. Backen, you can clarify, but usually if they're working with staff towards a solution or, or, or anything, staff doesn't usually move on them, but can you clarify that?
That's correct, your worship. So I think it appears from Council Fox's comments that one of the three buildings has been removed, and there may be an effort to retain the other two buildings. If they indicate come September 16th or by now that they intend to apply to the Board of Variance for permission, we would stand down then until they actually conclude that process, and after that process is concluded, we then follow the ruling of the Board of Variance.
Well, it do indicate in the last paragraph of the September 6 family to take our building issue, permit issued to the Board of Variance where we can work toward getting our property into compliance. So they've already indicated they want to do that. So I'm just, I'm just going through this back and forth, and I mean, they've missed the September 15th deadline. Fair enough, okay, that's, that's, and they have been working with bylaws, and I have no idea what the status of that is, if they're continuing to do that. It just indicates in the letter. So maybe through you to Mr. Backen, we can just somehow indicate to them, you know, we will follow up with you after the next Board of Variance meeting, which is to be hosted on October 17th.
Well, there's a meeting tomorrow, I understand, but they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be on that agenda, it's too soon.
That would be too quick?
That would likely be too quick, so we, just to clarify, though, we would be advising them, we're holding off, provided they've made application to the Board of Variance. They've expressed their intention to, but they must follow through and make application to the Board of Variance.
And I think it's important that they continue to work with our bylaws at removing the necessary equipment to bring the property into compliance, too. And so can we send them a letter indicating that and indicating that they need to be on the October 17th Board of Variance?
Staff will communicate with that, because if there's submissions, they should develop for their October 17th meeting, but it's incomplete, we would allow them to go to the November meeting. If they actually made a bona fide attempt to do so, then we would actually give them additional time if they're actually actively working on their application.
Okay, I'm not sure what is necessary to go to a Board of Variance, I've not ever been there, but, so will staff send a letter then, just based on, on that premise, to Mr. Henry?
So that staff agree?
But they have to, I agree, they have to show initiative and be capable of demonstrating initiative.
All right, so staff has agreed to that?
Yeah.
But I mean, they should probably be doing it anyway, wouldn't, wouldn't you think? Okay. Anything else under new business? Councilor Davis?
Just to clarify, Council...
New old, any old business, apparently?
No, no, I, I, well, just to clarify with Council Fox, the, to go to Board of Variance, all the board wants to hear is the hardship. It's the hardship they want to hear. So that's, you, you asked what it's all about, well, they'd have to prove, well, they, that's what they ask for. They want, they, they get all the information, and then, then when you go to the Board of Variance, which is every third Tuesday, and the board would like to hear your side of the story on your hardship, why it's a hardship for you that they can adjust the rules to comply.
Counselor?
Pardon?
You've been there before?
Well, I sit on the board, the board, and I give, like, I'm, that's, yeah, and, Counselor.
Yeah, they're the Counselor. But I mean, what we're hearing is if they need to make application, first of all, to be at the, at the board. And as I mentioned earlier, as long as there's something happening on the file, I think staff won't be going over there and...
Yeah, all right, that's, but we have to indicate, they have to show the mission.
That's right. Okay, anything else under new or old or any business?
Termination.
Okay, that's been moved, seconded by Council Qualley, all in favor, opposed? Thank you, we'll see you at 7 o'clock?